Jacqueline, did you type up the minutes for the last meeting? Do you have a resolution number for that, the Robert Benjamin hiring? Okay, yep. How are you, Mr. Rose?
I'm well, I'm well.
Are you muted?
I don't know, let me check here.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, yeah.
Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. I can't hear you.
Ah, well, let me see what we can do about that.
Can you hear me now? No, huh? Laura, you're muted, I think, still. Lauren, can...
Yeah.
Are you on now?
Yeah, hi there, hi there, I just unmuted. The agenda document you just sent out, I got an error when I tried to open it.
Can everybody hear me?
I can hear, yes, I can hear you.
There's nothing in the document, so, the agenda.
And I can hear you, Bill, can you hear me?
Now you're unmuted, you were muted for a sec, Bill, now you're, now you're unmuted. So, Bill, so I guess if the thing is only the agenda, that's fine. The document you did just send, the Word document, I couldn't open, the document, this is a PDF that has the plan and proposal I could open. But again, I could not open the agenda. But that's, that's probably okay.
Anybody hear me now?
I can hear you, Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
The freaking Verizon commercial here.
Can you all hear me?
Yes!
Yes, I can hear you.
Let's go. Alright, I wonder what the hell was wrong. Alright, I got a call to order, the June 14th special meeting in Woodstock Town Board, 9:30 on Monday. I have two resolutions to offer. The first resolution, we have to amend, we hired Robert Benjamin last week. Civil Service, they, they had sent us a tentative list, the list is, is, there's an issue with the list, so we have to hold off on making a permanent appointment. So I will amend that resolution to read as follows. Be resolved to amend the resolution hiring Robert Benjamin as a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Woodstock. To hire Robert Benjamin as a 90-day full-time temporary police officer for the town of Woodstock at a rate of 2540 effective June 12th, 2024, 2021. So the only change is it goes from, from a full-time to a 90-day full-time temp.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the other resolution that I wanted to do, I sent you a proposal last week. We were successful in getting a grant to hire a planner to help with our zoning issues regarding housing. So be resolved to authorize, I should have wrote, authorize the supervisor to engage the services of Nan Stoltenberg to assist the town of Woodstock with zoning revision, see attached proposal.
I'll, yeah, okay.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, so we have a cost estimated 10,450 without options, 11,990 with optional tasks. Bill by the hour, so it is an estimate. So how much was the grant for?
The grant was for $8,000.
Okay, so we have...
We're gonna spend a little bit of money, and we'll spend a little on legal fees as well.
Okay, and so... I mean, I, I should have my questions already, and I apologize for that, but you know me. If we're at the last minute, all that stuff wouldn't get done. So, so she is going to, to make a long story short, well, she's gonna assist the town update its zoning related to housing needs in the community. So, okay, and so her, so I don't think we saw a resume from her. So do we know what she's done? Okay, Community Planner and Environmental Associate in Burn, New York. Do we know what she's done, or do we know why we have confidence in her, what she's gonna give us?
She's helped a number of communities, again, Deborah Dewan could answer that better, they have a relationship, they've worked together.
I see, okay.
I thought there was a resume that went out, maybe it just went out to the Housing Committee, I'm not sure.
You have...
Yeah, she, she comes highly respected, highly recommended, so.
Okay. Okay, so, and, and so, and are we planning, I know we do not meet tomorrow, we meet a week from tomorrow. So are we planning to formally kick off the super committee, I don't know what the name of it's gonna be, but I know, Bill, you have the names of who all is gonna be on it, so are we gonna formally kick that off?
I, I am gonna form the task force right after we vote on this resolution.
I see, and of course, since I can't open your agenda file, like, I can't be reading it as, I'll listen as you talk, so. Okay, so, so we expect then, and I think, you know, it's certainly worth us spending money, so it sounds like we think our, we'll be spending $4,000 of town money, because there's an $8,000 grant, we'll spend $4,000 of town money. And we believe that what we're gonna get from her is, oh, we have Maria Elena. So... So if we get what we're looking for, edits to the zoning law recommendations, we do need to... A, a thing, a thing that I believe is, I mean, before, before we do recommendations to the zoning law, the thing that is not yet, in my opinion, been done for the housing is, we have techniques thrown out. As, as we all know, I'm chair of the Zoning Revision Committee, and there's a Housing Committee. And the Housing Committee did share with the Zoning Revision Committee techniques, like you can have a floating zone, you could have, you know, there's different things, you know, we can have a land trust, there's, there's different things that we know have been thrown about. What, what, in, in my, oh, we got noise coming from somewhere.
Okay, let's go.
So, so what's, what we don't yet, what I believe we don't yet have is decisions of what and where. Updating the zoning law is a step. Once you know what and where you want things to change, then you say, okay, where in the zoning law do we change to make it be the way we want to be? But there's a big decision of what and where things should be, where should the floating zone be, what should the criteria be?
Yeah, but those are all things that come together once the moratorium is declared, we can't decide that now.
Well, but, 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 is she gonna help us do that?
Yes.
Originally, she was gonna, the Housing Committee wanted her to help. But now that we're going into the moratorium, I assume, she's based, this is all merging together, and she will be a part of that, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so that's, as I read through this, I'm looking to see if it's clear. And as I read through this, develop zoning update, there's a difference between, so I wanna make sure, like, I see...
That's it right there, develop, drive, zoning updates.
But here's my point, though, my, in, in my view, there's a difference between the zoning update recommendations, meaning, you know, the zoning law says, you know, section one, part two says blah, 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 it ought to say blah, 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 bleh, you know? So, so actually changing the wording of the law, to me, is a different step from deciding what you want. So I'm trying to make sure, I guess, in your view, this is all included, in my view, maybe not so much, because there's gotta be a decision maker of what Woodstock wants, and once we decide what Woodstock wants, then...
That's called the Town Board.
Well, it hasn't been done, again, I'm telling you, from speaking in the Zoning Revision Committee and knowing what the Housing Committee has given us, they've given us ideas, but they haven't given us specifics of, you know, they've given us some what, you can do a floating zone. They haven't said where, when, why.
The whole idea, the whole idea of this, this big committee is to pull all that together and come up with the language for amendments towards zoning law.
So my question is, will this planner help us figure out what we want, or will she wait until we tell her what we want, and then she says, okay, here's how you change the zoning law to make that happen? There's a difference between changing the zoning law to make it happen and deciding what you want, so...
She's meeting with the Housing Group, right, to look at, to talk about the recommendations, she's gonna be working with them also, correct?
Actually, so, so the one, the one minor adjustment that would need to be made here, and I, when I talked to Nan later today, is she's gonna be meeting with the, the super committee, or whatever we wanna call it. So it won't, you know, she, she initially directed this towards the Housing Committee, but now we're including the committee in there with, with members from the STR, the Short-Term Rental, and the Zoning Revision Committee.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it'll be the super group then, you know, she'll be working kind of hand-in-hand with them, she's not just gonna be off to the side on her own, coming up with what she thinks is the best.
She'll also, yeah, she'll also be giving guidance, she's been through this before.
Yeah.
And it will take us through the steps, I, I'm hoping, and...
But, but, okay, but I'm, and I may be the only one on this point, and it sounds like I am, but let me try again. So I like to make sure that a document says, says what's gonna be done, and then people do what the document says. And so what I wish, and I may not get my wish, won't be the first time, it's okay. What I wish is that the document more clearly stated that she would help guide Woodstock in the decisions of what changes ought to get done, not just...
Laura, Laura, send me the language that you would like to add to this document by the end of today, and I, and I'll add them in, there's no formal contract.
Well, I, so I think, so I think where I would put it is, okay...
Just, just take the, take the agenda and add, add and read the language you would add, and I'll put that in there.
Okay, so as I started out by saying, I can't, loading down the agenda failed, I'm looking at the PDF you sent us a few days ago. So, so by definition, I can't change the agenda because I can't even open it, so...
So take, so take the proposal that I sent a few days ago, and, and just redline that, or, or send that back.
Again, it's a PDF, I can't redline it, I can only...
In an email, give me notes.
I will do, I will do my best, alright, so I will do that, and so if it clearly says, it sounds like we're all agreeing that she's planning to help us make decisions about, again, we got the what, the Housing Committee told the Zoning Revision Committee what, but they didn't say where, when, why, or how, well, they gave us some what, they gave us some what and why.
She's, she's neither a resident or an elected official, she'll make proposals, she'll take the advice we give her, the concerns, the issues we give her, and make recommendations.
And help formalize it, because...
And then when we accept those recommendations, she'll help put it into zoning language.
And that's perfect, and that's the step I wanna make sure is clear that we're asking for, is help us decide what we want. It's very clear she's gonna help us put it in the zoning language, but the, the step of helping to start, so, so I'm, I will, I will send you, I will look at it again and send you wording.
Perfect.
That clarifies that, okay.
Perfect.
Alright, thank you.
And, and it could just be something we add to the bottom of, you know, she's got one through four, she's got little notes here, could just be additional notes.
There you go, that's a really, that's a good point, too, look at the note, okay, alright, thank you.
Move the question.
Move the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anybody got anything else?
Well, you have the other resolution.
Alright, well, so I'm, this is gonna be a task force, so I'm just...
Sound of resolution.
Appointing Deborah Dewan, Kirk Ritchie, Richard Kepner, Laura Ricky, Jeff Collins, and Michael Distiglione as members of the, the, what do we wanna call it?
What hap, what happened to Ed Sanders?
Let's call it Blind Faith. The Blind Faith Committee?
Well, that was, that was the first super group.
Okay. Now, and, and just so we're all on the same page here, the other committees are not being disbanded, they're not being discounted, they're not moving away. Those committees are gonna help the, the, the Blind Faith Committee pull this all together.
Yeah, now what happened to Ed Sanders? I thought we'd agreed Ed Sanders would be on it.
He wasn't on the final list that I got.
Yeah, well, he, we were gonna add him as a member of the STR, cause he's, he was on zoning revision, we didn't wanna put three people from zoning revision, so we were gonna call him an STR person, but he agreed to do it, and I think that he would...
He agreed?
Yeah, he did. I did.
Who asked?
I did.
From the STR Committee?
Well, he agreed to do it, I said, are you willing to do this? Ed Sanders, as we all know, was one of the people that wrote this.
Ed's a good friend, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so, that's all I'm saying.
So, so the, the one thing I will tell you is that, you know, it's, it's a task force, the task force can agree to bring anybody in to...
I don't, I have no objection, I don't, I just, it's just, just first I'm hearing about this, I have no objection.
Okay, so, Richard, your buddy's with him, talk to him, and we'll, we can add him if need be.
Well, I, I talked to him, he's already said yes, because he thought he was already on it. And it turns out, what, the meeting he was on was an STR Committee meeting, he thought he was already part of the super group. And, and he's the one who's been, he, he's been doing the lion's share of the writing in the Zoning Revision Committee, he's the MVP, I'm just saying. He, he knows the history, he knows why things were done, he's got good ideas of wording, his, his, his ideas and recommendations are always spot on. I, I think that he's important to this committee, and he said yes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll reach out to him today.
Okay, so if you're including him on the list, so, so your list tentatively, as we vote, yes, we're voting and including him.
There's no vote, the supervisor's appointing a task force, so I, I can, I can add more people to the task force as need be.
Okay.
I'd like a one...
I, I've talked to these six people, so, so...
Well, well, Mike, Michael has been on the Zoning Revision Committee, and he has had limited time to spend on it. As you talk with him, he would be, I guess, representing the ZBA, but I can tell you, he hasn't had a lot of time to focus on it, so I'm not sure what he told you about his availability.
Okay, he seems willing and able. And the one person, the one other, the seventh person that I have not had contact with, but I may be adding, is Judith Kerman from the Planning Board.
Oh, well Judy's great.
Yes.
I'm all in favor of Judy, if you wanna add Judy.
In any event, Richard, you, you need to get to a meeting now?
Yeah, but I got one quick thing.
Go ahead.
Deborah Dewan is chairing this committee, right?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
She's, she's the lead.
Yeah.
And we have to recognize that, and recognizing that, I do believe this is gonna be a lot of work. I believe she should get a stipend, that's all.
We should lay out, I, I'm not opposed to that, all I am saying, we should lay out a statement of what the expectation is, and as we lay out a statement of the expectation, I am in, fully in favor of that. But we should lay out the expectation before we agree to the...
I mean, she's already gotten the grant, she's putting all this together, I mean, she has a lot of work ahead of her. And the rest of us, the rest of us have all our other committees and other work, so I just think she deserves something.
I, I agree with you, I'd like to see a written statement before we vote on it, and also, would the stipend be a monthly pay, or would it be a one-time stipend?
Let's just say we give her $1,000 and be done with it.
Wait, whoa, 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 wait a second, let, let's, let's think about this, we don't pay any other volunteers.
I know, I know.
We did not pay Kirk Ritchie for 18 months of comp plan. I, I think we should, we, we should think on this, there's time to do it if, if the majority of the board wants to, but we are setting...
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of it.
Well, listen, 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 let me explain something, though, we have a nine-month window to get something done, alright?
Understood.
She's gonna drive it, alright?
Well, it's gonna be a group effort.
No, she's gonna drive, she's, you know how these things work, there's the lead, the chair of the committee's gonna drive it, alright? If you don't wanna give her the money, that's fine, but I just think it's a disservice to her, she just brought $10,000 into the town. You know, I don't know what other committee chair has done that.
I heard, I heard an $8,000 grant.
And I understand about Kirk Ritchie and all the other chairs, I'm just saying, we got a legal requirement coming before us. And we better get it done, or else it's gonna cost us a lot more money than a thousand bucks.
Richard, can I ask that you write up, or Deborah write up, her...
Well, I'm not gonna write it up, it's the board's, I didn't agree with it, I mean...
I, I mean, I, I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying, now, is she retired, so she'll be like full-time on this, kind of, in a way?
Well, she, she, she lost her job when Jim Metzger lost her race, so...
Oh, I see, so she, so she is, so she, this would be her full focus. I, I hear what you're saying, and this is a big job, and if we're, and, and, you know, Bill, I heard your argument, oh, it's a whole team, but I can tell you two things here, one thing, you have a whole team, and I can tell you, I've been a leader of teams for a long time, and you got your MVP, and you got your people that aren't really helping, so first of all, she's stepping up as an MVP, secondly...
We have a Town Board meeting next week, we can all talk about it, think about it, it is an extremely, extremely slippery slope, we've had...
I, I'm just putting it out there, if the board doesn't wanna do it, that's fine, I'm just saying why I thought it was possible.
If we have, if we have a write-up commitment from Deborah, then, because this is, this is a big deal, this is a huge deal, you know, I've seen it from the zoning revision end of it, the Housing Committee's been working for a year and a half, two years. You know, we just started on it a couple of months ago, but this leadership, this decision-making is a huge deal, it's important to the town. And, and the other thing I'll tell you about, and Kirk Ritchie did a fabulous job, I was on the comp plan, I was liaison, as you know, and very involved with the comp plan, Kirk did a fabulous professional job with it, but the diff, but there is a difference because we have a deadline here. The comp plan, he did a fabulous job, it did not have a deadline, it got done when it got done. And, so, so anyway, I don't know how Reggie, I think I know how Bill and Lauren feels, I don't know how Reggie feels.
We never gave a stipend to the chairman of the planning board, and we certainly have handed them some shit sandwiches over the years, and, and never a stipend.
Well, I'd like to hear...
I lobbied for one years ago, and, oh, I, you know, he volunteered to do it, she's a volunteer.
Okay, I know we have two no's and two yeses, Reggie, what is your...
Yes, I'm really torn at the moment, because I know Deborah's gonna, whatever is written up, she's gonna do that, and then some. But I do worry about, you know, other volunteers, she does know it's a volunteer role, right, coming into it. So I just think, like, the precedent that it sets, cause then other folks will come and say, you know, well, wait a minute, I'm spending all of this time on these other things that are important also.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I, I threw it out there because of the legal requirement of what we're doing here, so.
I mean, if we feel...
Laura's correct about the planning board, and maybe it'd be, but there is a legal thing here that's driving my thought, that's all.
So then, then maybe, so let me think about this, maybe it would be more appropriate to have one of the paid council people as the chair of the committee.
No, Deb's gotta do it, she's got the background, she's got the knowledge, she's got the connections.
So, so let me do this, let me talk to Deborah, I'll, I'll, this is a public meeting, so it's, it's not, it, it will be out there, let me talk to her, and...
Yeah, I mean, I would draw the recommendation if you want, for now, but...
No, don't, don't, let's, let's...
I mean, this didn't come from Deborah, right, this didn't initially, this didn't come from Deborah, this...
No, 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 I've never spoken to her about it, I just got thinking about it last night, she's calling me at nine o'clock last night about stuff, so, you know.
Well, well, so, so a question I have, and just to remember the numbers, I heard Bill say it's an $8,000 grant, Richard, I heard you say she brought $10,000 into the town.
Well, I don't know, that's, immaterial.
Well, anyway, so, so we have an $8,000 grant, and as I look at this proposal of, of, of hiring the planner, the, the town's out-of-pocket money for that is about $4,000, cause we're expecting up to $12,000.
Doesn't matter, it's immaterial, really, I gotta run, so, I'm sorry.
And, I, eight thousand was on the top of my head, it could be $10,000, I'm not...
Yeah, but, but in, in any event, I, I, I am, if I saw a written write-up of her, of her committing what she's gonna do, I would then consider yes, but I would need the write-up first.
Let me just, let me just throw out there that we're gonna pay far more to our attorney for this moratorium than we're talking about with this little grant, so. And that, we have no estimate, or, or no, no idea where we're going with that. So, and anybody, anybody have anything else? Richard, you gotta run?
I gotta run, I'll see you later.
Enjoy your next meeting.
Thank you.
I've put together a, a short list of reasons why the town should buy the Lasher property and move the town offices into it. If anybody wants to hear it, if not, I won't waste my time.
I, I did a tour of the Lasher property, I, I believe, before I had the tour of it, I believe it had lots of opportunity and possibility. After having the tour of it, you know, not only is the price high, $2.5 million, the, the price of, of retrofitting it to be what we wanted, and besides the fact that it doesn't have enough parking right there...
Never mind, I gotta, I gotta run, I can see nobody's interested in listening to this, so...
Why, I wouldn't have issues.
Laura, oh my goodness.
There we go, so, what's your opinion of the Lasher property, Reggie?
I, I will try and get Lauren to forward that to us by email.
I mean, I was open into hearing what he had to say, I do agree, I mean, with Laura, that I've not taken a tour of the property, but again, to think about what we need, need it to be, the cost of the property, and then all that will go into it, have to bring it up to what we need, seems like a little, little much.
A lot to chew.
A lot.
My belief is, is a lot to chew.
Right, and not impossible, but it'd be a lot. So I was open to hearing that, but he just had Laura ask a question and left, so, you know, I don't know what he really...
There you go, so...
There you have it.
Yeah, these, these things happen.
Apparently so.
But, but what I'll say is, when I toured it, you got the main house, which is old, it, it could be magnificent if it were brought to what it can be, but where it is today and making it magnificent are two different things, because everything's old in it, and who knows? You know, when you get behind the walls, how's the electric, how's the plumbing, I don't even know, right? All I know is what I saw, a lot of upgrades would be needed. Then you have the, you know, the visitation building, which is kind of closer to what you might need, but still, what would it need to be? Then you got the two buildings, and you drive into buildings to the right, that they call the carriage house, and the back one is at the barn garage, I don't know. There's actually two kind of connected buildings there, and they are totally, totally not ready for anything on the inside. And unless you had an inspector go in and inspect it, I don't even know whether the shell would be enough to say you, you got the entire two buildings, and, and now you're gonna make them what you want, well, is the shell even, you know, how old is, are those buildings, I don't know, and inspector would have to say, is the shell of them even up to withstanding a whole, you know, cause the use has been this huge vacant space inside, right? It's not floors and offices and people and...
People in.
spaces and, you know, so it, it's just, and I was, I went in with the thought it could be affordable housing, that maybe we buy it, we convert it to affordable housing, it's not ready for anything, you know, so that's what I saw when I went inside. And, and that needed repair, you know, I saw stuff needed repair, as well as it, it's not formatted to meet our need on the inside.
Right, and if people were complaining about, you know, some folks were complaining about the supervisor's office being separate, now we're gonna have how many buildings, and how many departments are gonna be set up instead of, I mean, just one building? Like, it's enough, you know, you have the supervisor's cottage, and then the main building, so people were kind of, some people were balking at that, I, you know, so if we split up the departments down into four different bill, you know, but you gotta go here and here, I don't think folks will...
And, and there's not already parking, there's, there's enough parking for funerals there. A, and there's not already parking, there's, there's enough parking for funerals there, but there's not really, if we put, if we put all the offices there and vacated the Cuomo, a, a, and not to mention the fact that it's in a bit of a, plane, there, there's a water issue, that's why they call it Library Lake, which is the property right next door. They call it Library Lake because there's a water issue, I mean, there's just, um.
A lot of unknowns.
Well, well, yeah, I, I saw issues, and it would seem to me, uh, well, anyway, I'm still hoping.
What can we do with these buildings, then? I mean, we'd still own them and still.
Yeah. Well, that, that would be a big question, and as far as the supervisor's cottage, y, you know, some people don't listen. Uh, and I can't say I'm perfect at listening, but, but, yeah, but, but I will say, as far as the supervisor's cottage being separate, I, I've heard people say, that, that people, you may have people complain about that, but other people say, well, it's really good. You know, the supervisor has their own space, the super, supervisor's not breathing down the neck of all the other departments. When he needs to meet with them, it's easy to do, he just walks across the parking lot. So, you may hear some people complain about the supervisor's cottage continuing to be separate with this renovation, but I, I don't hear the employees complaining about it, or Bill.
The employees actually love it, both in my office and, and across the way.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
Plus, we get our daily steps in.
Well, that, well, that, yeah, so, so, so people may complain about it not being all connected, but other people are saying, hey, this is perfect, so. Um, a, 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 anyway, um, so, so I.
I just wanna add something very quickly.
Oh, yeah.
Or just, just suggest that, that in, in either scenario, I mean, you, you could potentially make it affordable housing. You know, if the town invested in that kind of endeavor, then.
But, but it wouldn't be self-funding, if, if we're gonna do affordable housing, it would be nice it was self-funding. By that, I mean, at the end of the day, the revenue coming in equals the cost you put into it. And affordable housing, the whole point is, you're not charging a lot. Again, you start with a two point five million dollar cost of the property, who knows how much it takes to bring it up to speed, and, and then to cut it into apartments, it, it is not at all set up for that.
Without going into details, I will tell you that there's a, an affordable housing group that's gonna go take a look at it this week.
Well, and, and God bless them, if they, if they can get grant funding, God bless them.
Yes, and I hear you, Laura, talking about the investment, but honestly, I think even if the town were not to necessarily break even, it's an investment in our people and in our town. Then, it's not really, it's a deeper issue, right? And I do understand, though, and I know that you understand, um, but it's really saying, like, we really care about this, and you know what, it may cost us some. But we care enough about it that we're gonna make the investment in our people.
Right, but, but we would need to know before we jump in, we would need to have a real idea of what the cost is.
Understand, yes.
And, and remember, remember that we, as a town, are zero balanced. So, we may agree that, that every time we spend money on something that not everybody benefits from, we do have to think twice, because I agree with you, it's critical that we have the affordable housing, it's critical that we have community sustainable housing, it's critical that we, that we achieve these goals, but we have to, we have to make sure we're, we're considering everything. Like, what is the cost to the town, and as we take, as we take costs and spread them across all taxpayers, are these the right expenses to spread across all taxpayers? So, I, I'm not, I, I, I agree with you, I, I, I wanna get it, and believe, and I'm passionate about it, and the zoning revision committee is a hundred percent on housing. And I asked Bill to be on the super committee because I'm passionate about finding the solutions. Um, I am passionate about finding the solutions, and grant money is, is the best way to go, because.
Of course.
You know, if we can do that to minimize the burden on the Woodstock taxpayer, but I certainly agree with the goal, I am passionate about the goal.
Okay, everybody done for today?
Uh, yeah, and as soon as we close, I'll say something to Maria Elena.
Okay.
Especially close the call.
Um, so, I adjourned the, the, uh, June fourteenth meeting of the Woodstock Town Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My message from Maria Elena, I've already voted for you, I went out yesterday and voted.
Thank you.
Early voting works.
It does. While I have you free here, just a quick thing I want you to think about for next week. So, parking, we're charging ten dollars a pop at the parking lot this year. Um, it's worked out very well, it's bringing quite a nice revenue, which helps to supplement, um, the burden to the taxpayer. We have, in the past, issued, um, free parking tags to residents. Um, but we did briefly, when we talked about upping the fee, talked about maybe doing away with that, having them park over at Mountain View. So I'm gonna ask you guys next week, when we have our meeting, if we wanna move forward with that. Um, you know, what I would say, and I have talked to a few people, I've happened to be over at the clerk's office when people are coming in looking for their pass. And I said, you know, we may be ending that practice, we may ask you to go park over at Mountain View, nobody screams bloody murder yet. I think they, they see that, you know, every time what somebody, a resident's parking there, it's ten less dollars we're, we're making. Uh, and if, you know, if there's turnover, it's even greater, so, um.
My initial thought about that that popped in my head is just, we have so many seniors here. At the same time, if they're parking in Rock City, I mean, they're obviously able to, you know, they're parking their car and walking somewhere, right?
Right, they're mobile.
They're mobile, so, yeah, but my first thing, I just thought we have so many seniors in town, that it's, you know. And then it's only during a set amount of time, it's only like from late May until October, right?
Right, it's not all year that we're charging.
All year, so.
And Mountain View is not.
It's not that.
Further, it's not that.
Well, depending where you go, it's not further at all, yeah, so, so my, my initial reaction would be no.
No.
Yeah, yeah, it is, is, you know, we, we've been saying all along, uh, it's okay that we charge for the parking because residents get the free tags. Um, yeah, it's not that I don't, you, you know, I hear what you're saying, that you're getting people coming in, and nobody's really upset about it, but.
Who would keep the tags?
I, 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 well.
We'll think about it, we'll talk next week.
Well, we'll think about it, I, 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 I guess I wish, I, I wish we could hear from the public. Yeah, I know you've heard from some public people, cuz you're over there talking to people, uh, I, I would have said, keep the tags. Um, but, I, I mean, how, how many, how many ten-dollar spots are we not having cuz of the tags? How many residents really are?
We, we were gonna do a survey this week to find out.
Well, that, that information will be helpful.
Mm-hmm, and quick, uh, Bill, this came up on, during the forum on Friday. And I know it came up at town board meeting, but the whole thing about the filing cabinets and the safety of the.
Oh, right.
Came up again on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Would you, I remember you addressed it, would you be willing to put out anything that just addresses that? Through the town, I mean.
Yeah.
Addresses that, because I'm tired of, I think, you know, people are saying, well, the clerks came out and said, you know, they weren't feeling safe, and I don't think that's really, they were really talking about how the need to have a better building.
And you know what I will, what I will do is, um, because Paul, Pastor Paul has been here now for four, six weeks, he's been scanning feverishly away, he's, he's gone through a huge number of boxes. So we've already lightened the load on the second floor. So, let me, let me get some data and information on that, and I can put something out.
Okay, if you wanna send it to, um, do you, would you mind sending it to us?
No, not at all.
Just so I think we can look and see, like, okay, if I'm reading this, I feel like this answers my question.
Okay.
Because I'm just tired of.
So who is Paul, 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 who, who is he doing, and what's he doing?
Remember, we hired a floater, a part-time floater.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So he's, um, you know, he's in my office four days, four hours a day, five days a week. Um, and has been working, we've done a phenomenal job. The, um, fire inspection, um, files have all been scanned, and, um, so we can move those files off-site, and he's on to building permits now, so, it, the, the load is being lightened as we speak.
Well, well, but Reggie's, uh, I wanna second Reggie's point, um, because, I'm, thank you, Reggie, for bringing.
And I can give that update to, to answer the question.
Well, well, but see, here's the thing, is people did say, we're afraid that file cabinets are gonna come through the second floor into the first floor. It would be good if we had some building inspector or maintenance or somebody confirm that that's not the case. Because if we think there's any chance at all that a file cabinet is gonna fall through the floor, onto the first floor, we ought to be taking those file cabinets and putting them on the first floor, even if they take up our meeting space and we have to go meet in the community center forever, until we get the new building, but we should not for one more second have a situation, if we believe there's any chance a file cabinet can fall through from the second floor to the first floor, if we believe there's any chance, we should be rectifying that immediately. We shouldn't let one more second go by, and we should verify, is it true or not true? Some professional, maintenance professional can tell us, is there a risk or is or not a risk? If the, if the risk is greater than zero, get those file cabinets downstairs, I don't care where you put them, and if we lose our meeting space, I don't care. We have other town-built properties we can meet in.
Okay. Got it.
Fact or fiction, fact or fiction, can it really happen?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it's some of this floating that doesn't need to just continue to float, and I'm just tired of hearing about it.
I hadn't heard anything about it, so.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I, I take your word, it showed up at the forum.
Well, well.
Otherwise, even just social on Facebook and stuff.
What we heard, but we heard the clerk say that, we heard the clerk say, we're worried about file cabinets falling through. We heard, when, when we had our, was it a public hearing, or whatever meeting we had on the Cuomo renovation, we heard employees state that is concerned.
Right, and so even though we are, feel like, okay, and they, you know, we think, you know, I just think having them come and say that publicly.
Michelle, you're on, do you wanna answer? Do you feel safer?
I mean, she can answer to us, cuz I feel like, I don't think, that's fine, I, I don't know that they don't feel like it's gonna fall in on them, I'm happy to hear her answer, but what I'm talking about is what the perception is and what's going on.
No, and I hear you, Reggie.
Yeah.
I, I totally agree with you.
Alright, Michelle? Is she there?
I, I see, I see your name, she's unmuted, Michelle, if you're trying to talk, you're on mute.
Okay, we'll get them next week, and I'll work on that, Reggie, I'll get you something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, guys, I'll talk to you soon.
Alright, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.